Alright. Morning, morning everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 91, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Ackles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we just give you the praise and the thanksgiving for the good things that are going on in our great city today. We thank you for the blessings. God, we thank you for the trials that you brought us through that made us better at what we are, better at what we do. We pray your wisdom today on this council as they make the important decisions that will affect this entire city. Pray for the mayor and his administration that you'll continue to bless him with the wisdom and the decisions he makes day to day. God, we just pray that your spirit will abound in this room today and that, God, everything we do as we conduct ourselves will bring glory to you. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 7th through the 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor.
I'd like for Sherri McGinnis, the Pilot Club President, to come up and anybody with you who wants to come up, be found. Whereas in 1921, a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization in Macon, Georgia. The founding members combined their diverse talents in friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. Pilot International is comprised of almost 400 clubs and over 8,000 members worldwide. Pilot International is committed to service in areas of youth development and leadership, brain safety and fitness, and caring for families in times of need. Members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through scholarships and grants to support research, education, community, and caregiving programs. Pilot International partners with Safe Kids Worldwide, Care International, Project Life Saver, and other respected service organizations to promote awareness for injury prevention and care for those in need. Pilot Club of Gadsden partners with Etowah County Sheriff's Department on Project Life Saver, serving 19 families with tracking devices in case of an emergency. The Pilot Club of Gadsden serves citizens at the Snell Grove Center, day school for developmentally disabled adults, residents of five group homes around Etowah County at Circle of Friends, and residents of Coosa Valley Nursing Home. Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 8,000 young people worldwide through their partnerships with anchor clubs. The Hokes Bluff High School Anchor Club, sponsored by the Pilot Club of Gadsden, has been named the Club of the Year for Alabama District and for Pilot International. The Pilot Clubs throughout the world are dedicated to meeting the needs of their communities through volunteerism. The Pilot Club of Gadsden received its charter from Pilot International in October 1936, making this year 80 years of continuous community service in Etowah County. Therefore, it is fitting that the achievements and contributions of this worthwhile organization, its clubs, and members be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October 18th, 2016, as Pilot Club of Gadsden and Pilot International, and Pilot International Founder's Fund Day in the City of Gadsden presented this 18th day of October, 2016. Congrats, Al. You need my glasses, Bobby?
He needed another job. Thank you, Mayor Guyton. I'd like to introduce the Pilot members that are with me today. Portia Foster, Joyce Smith, Rebecca Tinker. As Pilots, our mission is to influence positive change in our community and throughout the world. The Gadsden Pilots have been coming together in friendship for 80 years to give members an outlet for service, and I think we're holding up pretty well for 80 years. A, through the Anchor Program, we are preparing our youth for community service and to be good citizens. B, we focus on brain safety and health. C, we support those who care for others by giving caregivers little pick-me-ups. These are the ABCs of Pilot. And I'd like for you to look at your little packet, and you have a survival kit that I think you'll enjoy. It's a survival kit for public leaders. I hope this will help you, but more than anything, I hope you will read the information about the Pilot Club of Gadsden and the work we do in this community. Thank you, Mayor Guyton. Councilwoman, Councilman, thank you for your recognition.
Do want to thank the Pilot Club for everything you do. We really appreciate that, and I, you know, again, I hope this proclamation is worthy of the work and the sacrifice and the commitment that you guys have made to the community. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a great group, but I'd be remiss if I didn't just mention, when they came before us about a few years ago, about eight or nine years ago, and I was all for it, I ended up on the Elliot stage in a dress, high heels, shoes, and a wig, singing, what was that song? Stand By Your Man. Yeah, yeah. But I tell you what, the money they raised goes to the right place, and the only, or the worst, the person that looked worse than I did was Robert Avery. It really was.
They're pretty influential, being...
I get emotional when I start thinking about it.
Tears come to my eyes too, but for a totally different reason.
You ought to see six foot five, wearing a red wig and a dress.
Alright, unfinished business? We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 325 Ninth Street North in District 2, the State of Alabama, James R. Douglas Jr., or Julia C. Parker, and the Provident Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in November of last year. This property was actually rehabbed by the city approximately nine years ago. We did sell our lien and recover the rehab funds for that. Since then, the property has been abandoned and is actually in a state of disrepair. Again, we will look at possible rehab. Again, on this, there've been no improvement since the case was reopened, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2413 McCour Street in District 2, Thomas Patterson Jr., care of Donna Bone being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started the process in December of 2015. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items 11 through 15 are public hearings. They're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have five locations. 534 South Sixth Street, District 5, 405 South 11th Street, District 5, 808 South 12th Street, District 5, 812 South 14th Street, District 5, and 908 South 15th Street, District 5. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Club Avenue LLC, doing business as The Avenue, located at 922 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I would like to ask for suspending rules so we can vote on this today.
Okay, we have a motion to con...
We just do it.
We just voted on it.
We already voted on it.
We just voted on that.
We did. Somebody had to suspend the rule. Somebody did, but... No, it's for the public hearing. Just quick. It's for the public hearing. In fact, we do, man, we voted on it. Okay.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a State of Alabama Homeland Security Grant. This is for security cameras for the communications tower on Bellevue Drive and outside of City Hall, and the amount is $22,821. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for both of them, please. The first one's a resolution awarding bid number 3325 to Alabama Waste Disposal Solutions, doing business as EC Waste for the Solid Waste Transfer and Disposal Services. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one I have, for unanimous consent, is a resolution of a city guest to concur with the Alabama Department of Transportation's recommendations to award contract for resurfacing us Third Street and Goodyear Avenue to Good Hope Contracting Company. That's boots for $130,616. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. We have one citizen's request, Mr. Hutchins. As you come forward, please remember that our rules of procedure address acceptable decorum during this meeting, so please avoid referring to any individual by name or otherwise disparaging the good name and character of any individual. And as always, you have five minutes to respond.
Hi, my name is Eric Hutchins, and I'm an attorney for the TOPS organization, Ordinary People Society, and a group of Gadsden citizens. The reason why I'm here today is to address the vacancy on the municipal court for position municipal court judge. The Gadsden City Ordinance, Section 82-2A specifically states that the city council is to appoint two municipal court judges. For years, there's only been one municipal court judge, and in addition to that, there's supposed to be a presiding judge that presides over the Gadsden Municipal Court. Additionally, the city council is supposed to allocate for compensation $56,000 a year for the position of municipal court judge. As you are aware, there have been protests and there have been issues raised about the current position, and it's been months documents have been given to members of the city council to support the position that my clients have taken. Open records requests made on Etowah County Jail to show that there's a system of pay at stay, find a time within the municipal court system. I'm here today asking that you all exercise your legislative power and your duty for the people of Gadsden to appoint an additional judge. And what I'm also asking is, it's been nine years, as per the municipal ordinance, it says that the current municipal court judge can only serve a two-year term. That two-year term has transpired. The only time he can stay there beside that timeframe is you guys allow it to happen. There has not been any reappointment. You all have not complied with your legislative duty to appoint an additional judge. Open records requests have been made to see where not all $56,000 is being allocated to one judge, when in fact, the law requires that there's supposed to be two presiding judges. So, I'm asking you all, you've had ample amount of time to rectify this situation. I've talked to city council members directly. So, what I'm asking is, no later than two weeks from now, the current judge should be removed in compliance with your own ordinances, and there must be two judges. I suggest that you search a good talent pool that will include minorities and women to be on the Gadsden Municipal Court. There's never been a minority to serve as judge on the Gadsden Municipal Court. When you're in a city that has a substantial number of minorities, African-Americans, and you have four members of the Gadsden City Council, it's lamentable to see that there's no African-American judge or person of color or female serving currently as a municipal court judge. You have that opportunity now. You can appoint a judge, a qualified judge, immediately in the next two weeks, and you can remove the current judge. That would take care of a lot of issues that you're facing in terms of litigation. The city has defended this current judge, who is illegally on the bench as we speak for the past nine years. So, I'm going to submit something in writing to each city council member individually. I'd like to meet you with you all one-on-one. We expect, TOPS expect this to be done in the next two weeks, and the people and the citizens of Gadsden, they deserve that. They deserve the city council to uphold the law. When the person who's on the bench is on there in violation of the very laws and ordinances, it makes the city council look untrustworthy. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Council President. I just need to, I'm Lee Roberts, I'm the city lawyer, and I need to make a few comments. Number one is my advice to the council is not to respond on these issues at this moment because Mr. Hutchins does have a pending federal lawsuit on these matters. He's filed three lawsuits on these matters. He's mentioned pay or stay, find or time. He's mentioned that he has evidence from the jail records to substantiate that. Well, he's filed three lawsuits on that, and one has been dismissed because he couldn't prove those claims. And the other two are on the verge, are pending dismissal, because again, he has not proved his claims. He came several months ago, I met with him, along with a gentleman Bishop Dowdell from Auburn, and Eric Hutchins is from South Alabama as well, and a pastor Glasgow from Dofen. And I told him, I said, Eric, give me, on these times, on the claims that you make, give me a name, a date it happened, what happened, at least we can look into it and give that information to these gentlemen on the council. Today, he hasn't done it. He hasn't done it. Now, going to what he claims about two judges, the council has passed, did recommend, we have two judges. One's a presiding, and one fills in when Judge King cannot take the bench. So, we have two. He's misinformed. Secondly, he says they can only serve two-year terms. Read the law again. Look at the state law too, because if they have a two-year term, and they're subject, and once the term expires, they continue to serve until two more names have been approved by the council. So, read your law before you make that statement. And the third thing is he makes a big representation, he's from South Alabama, but he says we've never had a minority serve as a judge in this city, and he's flat wrong. I went to law school with a girl named Michelle Brad, and she took another job at Gadsden State, and she was here, and she served as a judge. And we have, and besides her, we have two other minority attorneys in this city, and one has served as a city prosecutor, and now serves, and we now have a contract with her, she now serves as a public defender in our court system. So, the statements he made are flat out wrong.
Thank you. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor?
I don't have any.
Councilwoman Toles? Councilman Ackles? Councilman Worthy?
Ah, yes. I have an announcement to make. We're going to have a community meeting on Thursday, October 20th, at 5:30. It'll be located at Head Start in the auditorium. We will be discussing speed breakers that we're going to hopefully put on Henry Street between Megan and Tuscaloosa Avenue, and also North Sixth Street has requested that we put speed breakers down there. So, we will have, we went door-to-door yesterday handing out flowers for this meeting because it's going to take over 90% of the residents to approve this so we can put it down. We've done the study on Henry, it meets the criteria to have speed breakers. So, now we have to get 90% of the residents that's going to be affected by these speed breakers to come out and sign the petition. So, on Thursday, October 20th, 5:30 at Head Start, and the engineer will be there to talk about the exact stuff that we're going to have to do. And also, we'll be going door-to-door in Sixth Street to let the people know about the meeting. So, and I had a community meeting at Carver this past Thursday, and the chief complaint was drugs. All the drugs is being handled on Tuscaloosa Avenue. So, I've asked the chief again, I asked the mayor, to have a task force to go down and deal with it. Even when I was handing out flowers, people was telling me we need to have, not only speed breakers, we need drug breakers, because it's so running rampant in that area. And we see a lot of different people coming from all over the county, different county tags, from all over the state, coming down in these areas, and people are tired of it. But listen, I was a police officer for 26 years, putting people in jail for, that didn't solve it. Until the community decide we want to take our community back, it's not going to happen. So, we're going to have to get together as men, and we're going to have to stand up to do something in our community. If we waiting on government to do it, it's not going to happen. So, that's all I have to say.
Councilman Billingsley?
Well, I'm going to second what he says. I have them in my neighborhood also, and we call the police, and they come out, and you know, there's just not a whole lot that you can do as a citizen other than tell people not to do that, because these people have weapons, and I don't want to get shot doing something like that myself now, but that's just me. But I'm going to do what I can to help this city be better in all phases of it. That's all.
Okay, Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everybody, the next Thursday, the 27th of October, at 5 to 7, we will have treats on Wall Street. The last count I had this week, there probably be 10 or 15 at least businesses giving out candy on Wall Street. We've got 2,100 hot dogs ready to give away, so come out, have a good time, and police will be down there for protection. Just come out and enjoy yourself down there.
Councilman Reed?
Go ahead.
Do want to remind the public that anytime there's active litigation involving the city, that this council is always advised to not comment. So, please understand that. One thing I will note, that this legislative body is currently now under no obligation to appoint a judge or a set of judges, but that is something that will be considered in its normal course, but again, we're not at liberty to speak any further than that. The Poverty Subcommittee meeting conducted this morning was again, a very fruitful and meaningful discussion. We've had 12, I'm sorry, 10 meetings now, and I think those who've attended would agree that all 10 of those meetings have been very meaningful. And as we've pledged to do, we're actually taking meeting notes for those meetings, and we'll share those meeting notes with the public in some form or fashion once we've completed all 12 meetings. But hopefully, generally speaking, what we ask ourselves of in each of those meetings is...
is whether or not there is a community solution to the problem, and whether or not there's a legislative solution to the problem. So, it's something that we try to review and look at for each topic to ensure that we're looking for remedies to whatever concerns we might have. The last thing I'll say is, I see Mr. Ragland sitting in the back there, and had a chance to visit his church, Bethel Baptist Church, this weekend, and I want to thank them for welcoming me and taking me in with open arms. I always enjoy visiting the various churches in my district. I don't know if I'm unique in this perspective, but I have quite a few churches in my district, which might speak to why District Two is arguably one of the better districts. But again, I do appreciate them taking me in. It was good words shared by a guest minister, and so, again, I appreciate the hospitality, and thank you so much. Go ahead, Mayor.
I want to follow up, Councilman Worthy, what he says is correct. The number to my office is five four nine four six four six, or you can call dispatch five four nine forty-five hundred. You don't have to say your name, your phone number, your address. All you got to do, if there's a lot of activity going on close to you and you think it's drug-related, give us the address. That's all we need. And we've got about twenty-five more policemen now than we had a few years ago, and we will be checking, we pass it along to the Drug Task Force, and also down to our chief office. So, you just call either one of those numbers. You don't have to give a name, just the address where there's drug activity going on all day and all night. That's all you got to do, and that'll help clean up a lot of stuff we need to help from neighbor. We can't just keep a police car riding around around the same block all time. So, be sure and try to do that. Five four nine forty-five hundred is dispatch, five four nine four six four six, because we get tips occasionally, and secretary, one of the girls, they sent it to the chief and the Drug Task Force, the address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, the mayor touches on a very good item, the first response to any concerns about problems in the community, whether it be drugs, crime, or any other type of crime, is that contact. Please remember that those calls are logged, and that helps the police direct their very limited resources. And I, you know, I get it. I mean, we've all had our issues. You know, I had a family member to just go through a criminal proceeding where they were the complainant, where they were actually addressing a concern, and the concern was an individual who felt, wanted to take the law into their own hands. They basically wanted to knock on a private individual's door and demand that they let somebody that wasn't there come out of their home. You know, the process can be slow, and it can, to some people, it can be ineffective. But we can't let the bad amongst us take over the discussion, take over the climate, take over our communities. As good people, we've got to make sure that the good people in our community remain steadfast and continue to drive the discussion and all the activity in our communities. Don't let the bad people take over. That's what I'm asking, and I want to encourage everyone to adhere to the mayor's direction. If you have something that's happening in your community, call. Log it, call, even if you have to call every day of that week. Be sure to call, because I can, you can rest assured that it's going to get some level of attention if you're continually reporting. That's what I do in my community. If there's something going on, I call. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.